Good evening. It is after 5:45, so I will call to order the February 7th, 2024, regular city council meeting for the city of Hendersonville. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll rise, please. You'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
We start with public comment. We have four people signed up in person tonight. Is there anyone online seeking recognition to speak for public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. In that case, we can allow three minutes per person. And if you would come to the microphone and give your name and address for the clerk's record, please. First is, is it Linda Thiery? Oh, okay. All right. Okay, Lynn Williams.
Oops. Okay. Thank you for your time. Hendersonville, Chadwick Avenue. Lynn Williams. Sorry, I'm usually not first, so here we go. But I did take some notes. And I'm not used to it being that loud. First, I want to, once again, we can go ahead and start with the moment of silence for Elijah Edward Timmons III. I'd like to take at least 20 seconds for that. The gentleman who was shot and killed at the orchard, who is seeking justice with his family. Thank you for your time today. I wanted to speak about specifically some discrimination, threats of violence, and brutality, brutality that pervade this community from the top down. Council members like Ms. Roundtree have been greatly harassed. As I'm aware, on January 20th, according to camera footage, two people pretending to be missionaries potentially. The footage, it looks like two white males in black hoodies attempted to intimidate her family. Police did not arrive to the house to investigate or talk to witnesses. There have also been death threats. The action, an action needs to be taken immediately to protect her. Secondly, Ms. King, Elijah's mother, was brutalized at the scene of her son's murder. I believe it was November 24th of last year. She has not received answers nor access to body cam footage at this point. I also need answers, and so does our community. When we were here last month, Ms. King spoke about, you know, not speaking on her behalf. And I was really concerned about seeing the chief's words in the local newspaper, speaking on behalf of Ms. King, saying that she would probably never be happy with the outcome. And I found this to be unacceptable and unprofessional, given the article stating that he had yet to tell her about the results of the internal investigation. The community needs, community needs accountability around the response and the access to this body cam footage from state troopers, county sheriff, Hendersonville Police Department. And this is very important to the community. Other people will speak on that today. Lastly, I just wanted to bring up the comp plan and the voting on the comp plan. Currently, as it sits, three members of this body have not been elected for this term. One was appointed and two were grandfathered in. I ask for you to wait till December to vote on the comp plan when everyone has been elected by the people, by the people. And we get the feedback from the farmers and the county and the pedestrian plan and the tree board and the tree ordinance and the sustainability plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
My name is Trenace Timmons. I live in 157 Michigan Avenue, Ashford, North Carolina. I just wanted to speak on behalf of my brother Elijah Timmons that was murdered November 24th at the orchard. To know Elijah is to love him. He was so loving, caring, all about his family. I'm just begging you to hear me out. I'm begging you to hear, put yourself in my brother's shoes that night that he fought for his life, the night that he was killed. I'm begging you to take in consideration that he had four sons that no longer have a father, a mother that's grieving for their son. And also, there is a person that is walking around that could possibly potentially hurt somebody else. I just, I beg that we start making examples out of people that are causing harm to our community, taking kids away from their parents and and having these mothers grieve for unnecessary reasons. I don't want this guy to go off and do something to somebody else's child because he feels like he's walked free from a murder that is saying is self-defense, but is, is, is not. No matter the circumstances, what type of record somebody had, or what type of person you think that person might have been, they're still a person and they still deserve to live. They don't deserve to die in the streets for no reason at all. My brother, he was a father, he was a son, he was an uncle, and it's so many children that's gone without, gone without Elijah out of some senseless act or whatever. I just want the community to get better. I want justice for, not only for my brother, but we also need like the community to understand that violence is a problem now. Our generation is suffering so bad because we're not having good leadership for these kids. And it should be other things that should be looked into besides just a murder that these kids need guidance. These kids need to be able to have certain things for after school instead of being able to, you know, get into violence situations and having to go through this. Families shouldn't have to go through this and especially these mothers grieving and crying for their kids. I just want the community, like I said, to get better for our children, for our elderly community, just so everybody can be able to be home and be safe with their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. King?
Hello. My name is Patricia King. I'm Elijah Timmons' mother. I appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak about my son. I first off want to just bring to your attention that I have reached out on several occasions and, and had conversations with the chief of police, several of the officers in the police department, several officers at the sheriff's department when I filed complaints. I've spoken to Ms. Volk. I have did an interview with the chief of police in front of Ms. Beaker. And I really want to just say that I have asked on all levels to call attention to what has been done and what hasn't been done. My son's case has been treated like a speeding ticket, I feel. I feel like every time I've spoken to an officer of anybody on any RAM at any job at the police department, sheriff's department, I have been dumbed down. I have not been listened to, and I have been basically told that I have not seen what I was, what I seen. I was brought into a room to help the police department identify the shooter in the case. I seen exactly what the shooter did in the case. He walked up on the screen where my son was standing behind other people and walked up slowly, callously, no reaction, aimed, did what he did for the sake of the children, and watched what he, his result of what he did, and walked back calmly and hopped in a car, and the car immediately pulled off. I have said this same story verbatim to everybody that I have spoken to. And every first it was, yes, we, we tried to reserve, you know, hurting your feelings by showing you what your son did, Ms. King. To, now is, you didn't see that, Ms. King. That's not what we see. So I asked to go back and have all the videos of any time I was interviewed, spoken to, anything, phone calls, and listen to me say verbatim what I seen on that video. And now the video is not saying what it seems. I wanted to bring to another thing real fast to the attention of this is Black History Month, and I feel like Black history should be changed in a lot of ways because it shouldn't be the history that we get mistreated and I get not heard or not validated, or that my son is viewed as a piece of meat and thrown to the trash. This man should have been arrested for something. Just walk up and take somebody's life and you don't get, and then you destroyed evidence. You've hot, you hid yourself until people have found you. And if it was self-defense, why did you destroy evidence? Why did you leave? You know, and these are the questions that I'm asking the police department and as well, you know, the stupidest reasons and answers that they can give me. I'm not an idiot. I'm not educated. I didn't go to college, but I'm a mother and I watched my son die on the pavement, and I was allowed to. And as I done that, I was slammed on the ground and yanked out of my britches, feet away from my son, and then told from numerous people in the police department that I was the reason why I was treated like that. I am still gravely in shock. I am sickened by the fact that I'm not able to grieve for my son in the right way because I'm forced to make people that already are being paid to do a job, do their job. There's no excuse for being told, where's this gun that this guy, if he came in and admitted that he was self-defense, where's his gun? Well, it might be under the water. Well, might need, you might need to go get it and figure out what other people he's walked around and just killed and walked off. I beg y'all to pay attention to what I'm saying because this is the treatment that I've gotten. And when I go and ask them straight up, what's, can I file this paper? Can I do this? I'm treated wrong because I don't have an attorney, and that's the excuse. You don't have an attorney. From the attorney, from the sheriff's department, was rude, disrespectful, and condescending when I spoke to him. And then when I called him out on his behavior, he basically said, you don't have an attorney, and that's why I'm talking to you in the manner that I, I am. So when he denies it, I just want you to know he's recorded saying it and doing it to me.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you.
Right. We did have a couple of digital comments. Both of them were in opposition to the proposed hotel behind the mall. And all members of council received copies of those digital comments. Consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have removed from or added to the agenda this evening? Not motion to approve as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, we have our agenda. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Not a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, and we have our consent agenda all approved. We have presentations, and we have, we have several.
First one is for Black History Month, and I believe there are supposed to be two students with us who are going to come on with something to discuss that. And that is JT Williams and Ibrahim Newborn.
All right. Okay, and what's, what, what is your name?
Reeve.
Reeve. Okay. And what's your name?
JT.
All right. This is a proclamation observing Black History Month. Whereas noted historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson announced the second week of February as Negro History Week in 1926 in order to increase public awareness and appreciation of the important role that African Americans have played in shaping America's history. And whereas the United States government officially recognized Negro History Week in 1976 as part of the U.S. Bicentennial, expanding it to Black History Month. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideas. This Black History Month lets us draw inspiration and courage from those who came before us as we continue the work toward full diversity, equality, inclusion, and representation. Now therefore, the city of Hendersonville, North Carolina, has proclaimed the month of February as Black History Month in the city of Hendersonville. And we urge all citizens to celebrate the history and contributions of African Americans in our community who have been vital to the growth and development and commit to becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected. So you guys get to take this. Shake, you get to shake hands. All right. Thank you for coming up. We appreciate your participation.
And next we have a presentation to, from AARP. You'll come on up.
The city of Hendersonville is the 17th emerging community in North Carolina and the 833rd nationwide to join the network of age-friendly communities. Although this is a mark in time, it is not the beginning nor the end of Hendersonville's commitment to age-friendliness. I've worked in western North Carolina since 2006 and joined AARP in 2016, and the citizens and agencies in this city have had a sustained commitment to older adults. When I joined AARP, Mr. Steve Studabaker here was already championing the effort to join the network of age-friendly communities. And I've sat around many tables with multiple planning processes to develop this possibility. And today it's coming full circle. I want to thank Steve Studabaker here for being a premier champion, Mayor Volk, city council, the Henderson County Aging Coalition, Elizabeth Williams, Alicia Evans, Matt Maney, past directors of the Council on Aging in Henderson County, and elders such as Marion Lowry that helped us get to this place. Hendersonville was an age-friendly community before this designation with multiple efforts and investments that make your city a safer place to live in age. May your membership in this network further the commitment that you already hold. The AARP network of age-friendly states and communities provides a structure and a process that can help guide change and serve as a catalyst to educate and encourage, promote, and recognize your wonderful efforts. Enrollment in the network provides member communities with resources to become even more age-friendly by tapping into national and global research, planning models, and best practices. And we are here to support the efforts and progress along the way. But this is your community, and you're doing great work, and I'm proud to present this certification to you today.
Mayor Volk, councilpeople, and esteemed persons who are employees, thank you very much. This is not just an honorific certificate being presented here today. Age-friendly community network membership represents a multilateral commitment. We are beginning the process of building relationships among mutually supportive parties committed to providing services and support to the citizens of Hendersonville so that each person in our community has the tools to age in place as they choose fit themselves. This will require several steps in the age-friendly community process, and at each step along our way, you and the community will be kept informed and involved in this process. We thank Matthew Manley for, and your planning department for getting us this far, simply calling us at AARP for information and help. We are committed to be there as citizens of community. We'll make sure that our work together will improve the lives of those people you were sworn to serve. Thank you. If you'd gather, Mike and our Matt, could you come up?
Mayor Volk, members of city councils, it's my honor to recognize our quarterly and also our annual MVP of the year. So I'll start with our quarterly MVPs just for the public. These are our, members of our team that have gone above and beyond in the last quarter. We strive to provide excellent service around the community, and our folks are always taking that extra step, that extra mile. So would like to recognize three groups of folks that, that have done an excellent job in the last quarter, and they'll be recognized with a lunch, and then also we'll recognize our MVP of the year. So I'll start with, let me start with Garrett Garden with the police department. I don't think Garrett's here. Oh, he is. So I'd like to have Garrett and the chief would come up, please. So Garrett, Sergeant Garden with our police department, a citizen, wrote a handwritten letter commending Garrett for assisting her after she was assaulted. She expressed how he helped her for more than, than, than he, she could possibly know. He went above and beyond the call of duty when he paid $30 to put gas in her car so that she could drive home. She called Garrett a blessing from God, and she is forever grateful to him. Garrett exemplified the department's missions to serve with excellence. So Garrett, thank you, and congratulations on this recognition from the citizens. And if Chris Conard would come, please, and I think I'll ask Brendan Shannon Hand, the engineer, engineering director. So Chris, in our engineering department, went way outside the job duties to ensure that our 11th annual Turkey Trot was safer than in the past. As a volunteer in 2022, he saw that the need to close church sheet on his own and contacted NCDOT for permission and stayed on city departments to ensure everything was in place. With 1,400-plus participants, his actions made for a smoother and safer event and also obviously gave up his Thanksgiving morning. So Chris, congratulations and for a job well done. Thank you. Okay. So this next group, I'm gonna do this all at once. The next group that I call up here is not only MVP of the quarter, but also our MVP, MVPs of the year. So I'd like to ask, I think, Public Services Director Brent Detwiler to come, Chad Freeman also, who is our utilities operations manager, and then our honorees this year, Brad Duncan, Jonathan Owen, James Clu, Caleb Smathers, Brian McCall, Peyton Blackwell, Tommy Sheehan, and Chase Dowdy. And, yeah, I didn't see that. All right. So I'm gonna read these gentlemen exemplify service excellence in our organization, and they are not only the MVP of the, one of the MVPs of the quarter, but they are MVPs of the year. And they'll, they'll get a plaque that'll get to be presented or shown, placed in their department and will be known as the MVPs. I'll read while they are recognized. On the evening of October 19th, 2023, a construction trench collapsed and then tapped, entrapped two individuals. Knowing that the Hendersonville Water and Sewer has a great deal of experience with trenches and has specialized equipment associated with that kind of work, the Hendersonville County Sheriff's Department contacted Brad Duncan in the Water and Sewer to lend assistance in the form of equipment and personnel. Understanding the gravity of the situation, Brad immediately dispatched Jonathan Owen with the city's factory truck to meet deputies and be escorted to the site. Additionally, Brad called in another, in other crew members to gather shielding and shoring equipment, as well as an excavator to have it on site if needed. All crew members and assets were deployed with great haste to respond and lend any assistance necessary to save the lives of those involved. Fortunately, emergency personnel from Henderson County were able to perform the extremely difficult task of excavating the entrapped individuals and save both lives. However, our folks were there, quick response, and regardless of, this was really not a water and sewer, but this is a, was a rescue attempt. So I want to thank Brad, Jonathan, James, Caleb, Brian, Peyton, Tommy, and Chase for a job well done and representing our organization in this outstanding manner. So not only MVPs of the quarter, but MVPs of the year. Thank you very much.
They're good. We do appreciate all our employees and are happy that we can recognize these special ones that go above and beyond. and are happy that we can recognize these special ones that go above and beyond. Thank you all. All right, we have a couple of public hearings. First is a standard rezoning at 116 Stewart Street.
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers. Madam Mayor, as you stated, we have a standard rezoning for 116 Stewart Street. Is this working? Maybe click on the screen, see if that helps. There we go, I think. No, I'll just have to give you the advance. As stated, 116 Stewart Street requests for a standard rezoning from Roger Grant and his wife Deborah. The current zoning at this, for this parcel is R-15, and they're proposing Greenville Highway mixed use. It is a .44-acre parcel, just kind of a standard, single-family residential parcel. This would, if approved, allow for all uses in the Greenville Highway mixed use. And the future land use map designates the property as high-intensity neighborhood. And more on that to come, next slide. The subject property is located in a transition area. The parcels in proximity to the subject property are already zoned Greenville Highway mixed use, with the exception of parcels zoned R-15 to the northeast of Southern Drive and parcels to the southeast, which are zoned in Henderson County's Residential 1 zoning district. The entire northwest side of Stewart Street is zoned Greenville Highway mixed use from Greenville Highway to Resort Street. Only two of the nine parcels on Stewart Street are zoned R-15. That's the subject property and 122 Southern Drive. The property directly adjacent to the south of the subject parcel is Cedarwood Inn, a motel cottage court that's accessed from Greenville Highway. Other properties in the vicinity are residential in nature, with the uses ranging from condos and townhomes to single-family homes with accessory dwelling units to manufactured home parks. Next slide. This table shows the list of uses that are permitted or permitted by supplementary standards or special use. So there's a column for R-15, and beside that is a column for Greenville Highway mixed use. The columns have an abbreviation, whether it's permitted or permitted by special use. If the cell is empty, then that means it's not permitted in that district. And just at a glance, you can see that there's a number of additional uses that are permitted in Greenville Highway mixed use that are not permitted in the R-15. Taking a look, next slide, the dimensional comparison. There's a minimum lot size for R-15 is 15,000 square feet. There is no such minimum lot size requirement for Greenville Highway mixed use. You can have a maximum of a duplex in R-15. There is no density cap in Greenville Highway mixed use. The setbacks for R-15 are 30 feet in the front, whereas for Greenville Highway mixed use, you have a 15-foot front setback for detached home, all the way down to zero for multifamily uses. The height is not too different. You have a 35-foot height restriction for R-15 and a max of 42 feet for Greenville Highway mixed use. So taking a look at the subject property, next slide. In the upper left, the original home is kind of off to the left, kind of behind some of the vegetation. And directly in the middle of the photo is an addition of a garage and a space above the garage. To the upper right, is just to the right of that photo, you're looking at the rear of the cedarwood cottage court and the privacy fence that creates a barrier between these two properties. On the bottom left, you're standing at the corner of Stewart and Southern Drive, looking down Stewart back towards Greenville Highway. Subject property is on the left, behind the split-rail fence and the vegetation that's there. On the bottom right, you're at the same corner, but you're looking down Southern Drive with the subject property on your right, again buffered with vegetation and a fence. Next slide, please. The 2030 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designates the subject property as High Intensity Neighborhood. This designation is also representative of all the parcels along Greenville Highway on either side, from Chadwick Avenue to Shepherd Street. The subject property and its surroundings are also classified as a priority infill area. A district designated as Medium Intensity Neighborhood is located one block to the northeast of the subject property. Properties adjacent to the southeast of the subject property are located in unincorporated county, and so there is no future land use designation. On the city's map, on the county's future land use map, they are designated as Community Service Center and Urban Service Area, where, quote, "A mix of commercial uses will be contained and residential densities are to be maximized where utilities are present." Stewart Street is classified as a local road. Next slide. So looking at the, going through the six criteria we consider. The first criteria is Comprehensive Plan Consistency. In this case, the proposed zoning of Greenville Highway mixed use is primarily consistent across the board with the future land use designation of High Intensity Neighborhood. There are some minor exceptions as it relates to not restricting office and retail to just along thoroughfares and requiring 40% open space as opposed to the 60%, which is stated in the comp plan. Next slide. The growth management designation is mentioned as Priority Infill, continuing the Land Use and Development Chapter. There are some additional goals in that chapter, such as encouraging infill development that utilizes existing infrastructure in order to maximize public investment and revitalize existing neighborhoods and minimize negative impacts from growth and land use changes on existing land uses. Looking at the population and housing chapter, it also promotes compatible infill development. It goes on to allow redevelopment and/or reuse of single-family homes that directly front on arterials and to office or high-density residential uses, encourage a wide range of housing types and price points in order to meet the diverse and evolving needs of current and future residents, allowing housing arrangements in existing and new neighborhoods that provide affordable and/or multi-generational housing alternatives in single-family neighborhoods, and promote safe and walkable neighborhoods and mixed land use patterns. The natural, and next slide, please. Natural and Environmental Resources Chapter, Cultural and Historic Resources, and Community Facilities and Water Resource Chapters did not have relevant goals and strategies. The Transportation and Circulation Chapter states to encourage mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses. Next slide. The second criteria is compatibility. In this case, the subject property is located in a transition area, is adjacent to commercial lodging business and single-family residential uses. Parcel is in proximity. The parcels in proximity to the subject property are primarily zoned Greenville Highway mixed use. Again, the entire northwest side of Stewart Street is zoned Greenville Highway mixed use. The third criteria considered is changed condition. Not far from the subject property, the roundabout at Stewart Street and Greenville Highway was installed. Additionally, along Greenville Highway, we've seen multiple development requests of varying scales over the last few years. And then, as we know, the housing shortage has persisted in our area. Next slide. The fourth criteria considered for rezoning is the public interest. In this case, Greenville Highway mixed use allows both residential and commercial development. However, due to the constraints presented by the size of the lot, high-intensity uses are unlikely to locate there. The fifth criteria considered is public facilities. The site is served by all city services. The sixth criteria is effect on natural environment. In this case, the subject property contains one single-family home, and a new garage apartment is under construction. There are no known environmental impacts at this time. The plant, next slide. The Planning Board considered this at their last meeting and recommended approval, and that motion carried unanimously. Next slide. As part of that motion, they put together the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Statement, as shown on the screen. Next slide. They included the three rationale for approval, also shown on the screen. And staff, next slide, has provided a Comprehensive Plan Consistency Statement that's drafted in case you find it inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. And next slide, there are two points of rationale for denial should you choose to do that. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this rezoning? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Is there anyone online seeking recognition to speak?
No, ma'am.
If not, then we will close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pins 9577-19-7262 from R-15 Medium Density Residential to GHMU Greenville Highway Mixed Use. Based on the following, the petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville 2030 Comp Plan, based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the development guidelines and primary recommended land use of the High Intensity Neighborhood designation aligns with the design standards and permitted uses outlined in the Greenville Highway Mixed Use Zoning District. We also find this petition to be reasonable and the public interest based on the information of the staff analysis, and the proposed rezoning would align the zoning of the subject parcel with other parcels on Stewart Street. The proposed rezoning would allow an increase in residential density. The size of the lot would constrain potentially high-intensity uses from entering this surrounding residential neighborhood. And that's it?
That's it. All right. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the rezoning for 116 Stewart Street, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Eyes have it, motion carries, and that rezoning has taken place. Okay, next, we have another standard rezoning, this at 799 South Grove Street.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. How it works? Cool. So the subject property...
Tyler, hold on one second.
Yes.
Allow this gentleman to get beside you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Absolutely. So the subject property is owned by Roy Neal and is currently zoned R-15 Medium Density Residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property to C2 Secondary Business. The site's approximately 0.52 acres. Any use is permitted in C2 would be allowed on the site if rezoned, and the Comprehensive Plan designates this parcel as High Intensity Neighborhood. The subject property is the end cap of a residentially zoned area between two commercial districts. The parcel is closer to Spartanburg Highway, is our zone C3, and contain uses that are found along our major commercial thoroughfares. The properties to the north along South Grove Street are zone C2 and contain a variety of commercial land uses. The R-15 zoning and single-family land uses located along Hillview Boulevard represent the final remnants of what was once an entirely residential area known as Hillview Subdivision, which was originally plaid in July 12, 1946. The subject property is adjacent to C2 to the north and across the street from C3 to the east and south. C3 consists of highway-focused businesses and is prominent along our major corridors, Four Seasons, Spartanburg Highway, Ashwell Highway. And C2 is less prominent around the city and is more found around the railroad corridors. So as you can imagine, C2 Secondary Business does allow for higher intensity uses than R-15 Medium Density Residential. Instead of going through all those uses individually, a comparative list was included in your packet, and I also have it available in a separate document at the end if we need to go through the uses. But the diminution requirements for both districts are shown on the screen. And as you'll see from the dimensional standpoint, C2 Secondary Business is also less restrictive in that regard. From R-15, everything in green is less restrictive, and you'll see that all of those are in the C2 section. This includes minimum lot size, building width, building lot width, setbacks, and height. Uh oh, we lost it. There we go. Top left is a view of the subject property from the City View Center Plaza, which is zone C2. The top right is a typical view from within the subject property itself. Bottom left is a view from the subject property from the intersection of South Grove Street and Hillview Boulevard. Bottom right is the view of the City View Center, which is adjacent, and I mentioned, is zone C2. Hillview Boulevard serves as a transition line between High Intensity Neighborhood and Neighborhood Activity Center as established in the Comprehensive Plan. The 2030 Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map designates the subject property as High Intensity Neighborhood. This designation is also representative of the parcels to the north of Hillview Boulevard and those fronting either side of South Grove, north of the subject property. Properties to the south of Hillview Boulevard are designated as Neighborhood Activity Center, as are all the properties in the vicinity of Spartanburg Highway. It should be noted that High Intensity Neighborhood designation calls for dense residential uses, but it does recommend commercial uses along streets, or does not include commercial uses along local streets. However, commercial uses along South Grove are designated as a High Intensity Neighborhood and would likely still be in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan due to their location along a minor thoroughfare. The parcel is designated, as I mentioned, as High Intensity Neighborhood, which is meant to encourage low-maintenance, high-density housing that supports neighborhood and regional activity centers downtown and provides a transition between commercial and single-family development, promotes walkable neighborhood design that creates attractive and functional roadway corridors and multifamily residential neighborhoods. The primary and secondary recommended land uses and development guidelines for High Intensity Neighborhood is on the screen, but I won't read through all that. A more detailed outline is in your packet. So the Land Use and Development Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan designates this area the Priority Infill Area, which are areas that are considered of high priority for city to encourage infill development on remaining vacant lots and redevelopment of underutilized, underdeveloped properties. I'm gonna touch on some of the more relevant portions of each chapter shown on the screen. An exhaustive list, as I mentioned, is in your staff report. So one of the goals of the Land Use Chapter is to encourage infill development that utilizes existing infrastructure in order to maximize public investment and revitalize existing neighborhoods. One of the strategies is to encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas planned for high-intensity development as indicated by Priority Infill Areas. My population and housing also touches on promote compatible infill development. One other strategy in the Housing Section is encourage mixed-use land patterns that place residents within walking distance to services and natural environmental resources. No goals are directly related to that in this rezoning. So for cultural and historical resources, community facilities, and water resources, there were no goals, strategies, or actions that were directly applicable to this rezoning. But in the Circulation and Transportation Chapter, it does mention encouraging mixed-use pedestrian family development that reduces the need to drive between land uses. For compatibility, the subject property fronts on South Grove Street. Most of the parcels along this corridor have through-time transitioned into commercial uses with very minimal South Grove Street-facing residences remaining. Judging by historical aerial photographs, the property has been vacant since around 2009. Before this time, there was a single-family home located on the property. There are currently two parcels with strictly residential R-15 zoning along South Grove Street, and this is one of them. Changed conditions, through-time Grove Street has become a minor commercial thoroughfare that connects two major commercial corridors of US 64 and US 176. Public interest, the rezoning will allow for additional commercial development in an area that has transitioned from single-family residential to commercial zoning. It also creates the possibility for developing a long vacant parcel along a minor thoroughfare. For public facilities, city water and sewer will be available to the site. Sites served by NCDOT maintain street in South Grove Street, which is classed as a minor thoroughfare, and a city-maintained street in Hillview Boulevard, which is classified as a local street in the Comprehensive Plan. Effect on the natural... Effect on the natural environment, subject property is currently vacant. There are a few mature trees on the property. If developed, those mature trees could be removed under the current ordinance. I know there's a tree ordinance coming through, but under the current ordinance, they could be removed. So, the planning board made a motion for approval, finding the petition to be consistent with comprehensive plan and reasonable for the public interest at their meeting on January 11, and the motion carried unanimously six to nothing. So, the planning board's comprehensive plan consistency statement is on the screen, as well as their reasonableness statement and rationale for approval. As you'll see, they had two. Staff has also provided a draft rationale for denial, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this standard rezoning? Okay, come forward.
Good afternoon, I mean, evening. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. Let's see. I did speak at the planning board as well. So, this particular site abuts residential. In many ways, it reminds me of Chadwick Avenue, where you've got this small little segment of residential sort of squeezed out by commercial. I know the residents there showed up and spoke up when you had meetings about the same street on the opposite end where it's the ending of the residential, and I believe maybe the planning board, I can't remember if this body as well, but rejected that rezoning because they were concerned, I think, about the loss of housing stock potentially. I can't remember the other points on that, but I remember that the planning body was against rezoning from residential to commercial. So, I just wanted to bring that back to your attention. So, because it abuts residential, things like buffers are important in protection for the residents. I also have concerns about the visibility there, and of course, protecting the trees currently on site, minimizing the impervious surfaces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Again, if you could give your name and address for the clerk's record.
My name's Roy Neal. I'm the property owner. I live at 131 Lindell Road in Hendersonville. I'd just like to say this property is only one of two residential zoned lots on Grove Street, and the other one's an actual residence that people have lived there a long time. But Grove Street has changed drastically in the last 15 years or so. This lot is about 100 yards from Spartanburg Highway. In the afternoon, there is the constant flow of traffic in there, and I believe the best use of the property would be for it to be zoned commercial, and I believe it would be consistent with the other development on Grove Street and the other thoroughfares in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Anyone else wish to speak to this rezoning? Is there anyone online seeking to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. That case will close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pin 9578-14-0598 from R-15 Medium Density Residential Zoning District to C2 Secondary Business Zoning District based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville 2030 comprehensive plan based on information from staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the subject property is designated as a priority infill area in the comprehensive plan, which are areas that are considered a high priority for the city to encourage infill development on remaining vacant lots and redevelopment of underutilized or undeveloped properties. The High Intensity Neighborhood designation also calls for offices in retail area along thoroughfares as a secondary recommended land use. We counsel find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the following information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because before C2 zoning is present all along Grove Street corridor north of the property until zoning transitioned to CMU at the intersection of South Grove Street and East Caswell. Five, the proposed rezoning to C2 could lead to infill commercial development on a long vacant and underutilized property.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the rezoning at 799 South Grove Street say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Eyes have it. Motion carries, and that rezoning has taken place. Thank you. New business, creation of an affordable housing steering committee. Okay. Your turn.
At our last council meeting, I had asked council if I could go about pursuing forming the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, so you do have a list of nine positions. So, I know we had discussed seven before, but I found a total of nine people that gave us a really well-rounded group. Some of these people I reached out to personally, about half of them reached out to me and said that they would be interested. So, we have representatives from Housing Assistance, a Realtor, WNC Source that handles the housing vouchers, the Builders Association, Pisgah Legal, the TDA, Housing Authority. The only two positions that I don't have a name for are someone to represent the Partnership for Economic Development, and I'd like to get a representative from Henderson County. So, if you all are happy with the list, then I would love to be able to go ahead and form the steering committee and move forward so we can get started on getting out an RFP and get the strategic plan going.
I would like to appoint Bill Lapsley to that seat that's vacant for that Henderson County person.
I would love for Bill to do that.
Okay.
And I do believe that we talked to Brittany at the partnership, so she was looking to see if she could find somebody to put in there, so they'll have to remain TBD for right now.
They're looking for an industry representative, so.
Perfect.
Because I know they're concerned about workforce housing.
Okay. You wish to nominate officially?
I do. Do you want me to just, can I read the whole list?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I wish to, one, form the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, and, two, nominate Sarah Cosgrove, Robert Hooper, Jennifer Duval, Hillary Paradise, Madeline Offen, Debbie Smith, and Connie Stewart. And Bill Lapsley, sorry.
Okay.
And a to-be-determined representative for the Partnership for Economic Development.
All right. The named people have been nominated. Are there further nominations for the Affordable Housing Steering Committee?
Did you want to do council members now? Or, because I did forget to mention...
Let's just do this first.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing, no further nominations. Those in favor of the names as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Eyes have it. Okay, those people have been appointed. Now, go ahead.
Okay, so we had also discussed having two council liaisons. I wouldn't imagine that we would both need to be at every meeting. Maybe we can tag-team it. I would like to be one of those people, so we would need one more.
I'd love to see you and Jen continue your work. You've both been working on this, and if other members would be agreeable to such, that would be...
If that's the case, I would still like to be involved some kind of way for this housing, housing is concerned.
But I am planning to have an affordable housing workshop that's going to be here at the Presbyterian Church, May 4. It's through the NACA program, the nation's best mortgage, and it entails affordable housing. But I would just like to be able to be a part of that. Everybody is on council. Housing is on everybody's platform, so.
I'll happily be on the committee as well.
I'm sorry.
I said I'll happily be on the committee.
Well, how can we work the, you know, I would love to come to some of the meetings too, but I know, I don't know how this works out if we can name two people and...
Maybe alternate. I mean, I just want to be involved some type of way.
How would that work?
We could have two council members plus an alternate.
There you go.
Good.
And Debbie could be the alternate there. Do you need that in a motion?
Yes, please.
I think I just did that.
All right. The motion is to nominate Mayor Proten Simpson and Councilmember Hensley as the city's representatives with Councilmember Debbie Browntry as the alternate, and I think whoever is available, wanting to attend the meetings, they are open meetings, and could certainly do that. Are there any further nominations? Not? Those in favor of two members plus an alternate say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Eyes have it. Okay. Are you going to call this group together to get them started?
Yes.
Contacting all...
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, kind of from, I think, from an organizational purpose, we'd be glad, from a staff perspective, to work with all three council members to convene these meetings and maybe select a chairperson from within the group or somebody to staff it. That way, if one of the three council members, you know, the three council members won't be there, we'll have some continuity related to that and be considerate of everybody's time and flexibility. So, we will do that, and staff will take a little bit of a lead to that, so.
We appreciate staff support.
Yes.
Definitely.
We'd be glad to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Boards and commissions, an appointment of an alternate member of Community Advisory Committee?
Yes. Mayor vote, members of City Council. If Matt will let me, I'll just, oh, I'll jump in and do it if you're okay.
You're good.
All right. So, we do have a Community Advisory Committee established for our comp plan. David Wright is our, one of our representatives from the Green Meadows and African-American community. David had had some medical issues and not been able to attend those meetings as often, so we wanted to appoint an alternate member to make sure the African-American community is represented on our comprehensive plan, and we would like to appoint Ben Smith as the alternate. Ben is associate pastor at Living Waters Church.
Speak live.
Sorry, speak live, sorry. Church, and we'd like to appoint him as the alternate member. And there is a motion, it's actually under City Manager Report. If you jump down to under cash, you'll see a motion there that's a little bit askew.
And you would like to make that motion?
I would.
Okay.
I move that Ben Smith be appointed as the alternate member of the Community Advisory Committee in H comprehensive plan.
Okay. Ben Smith has been nominated for the alternate member. Are there further nominations? Not? Those in favor of Ben Smith as the alternate for the Community Advisory Committee for the Gen H comp plan, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Eyes have it. All right. Got that done. Thank you. Council members, anything you want to mention? If not, City Manager.
Mayor vote, members of City Council, just got three things tonight. First, just draw your attention that the cash and investment report is included in your packet from Finance Director John Buchanan. Also, the January 2024 contingency and adjustment report from your budget office is included for your information, which is required to be presented on behalf of your policy there. The third thing I'd like to just mention, this is new, is I'd like to address a few of the comments that were made during public comment today. While absolutely the city, and I want the folks that are left in the room to please share this with the community, the city of Hendersonville is very sorry that Mr. Timmons was shot and killed on Thanksgiving evening. I will remind the public and the community that this was two individuals who got into a fight and chose to bring guns out in a private parking lot. I am, after working with the chief and talking to the police department, I am assured that our police department has done everything within their legal powers to this point to investigate this matter. I will say, based on the evidence, the video evidence and the evidence that we have received, they have done everything they can. No one is more disheartened than Hendersonville Police Department that they could not charge an individual with a crime in this particular case. However, the laws of justice are what they are. They have met repeatedly with the district attorney's office and reviewed the evidence. In addition, our folks, although the video that Ms. King has asked for is not public record, by law, we cannot share that with anybody that is not involved in the case other than law enforcement and district attorney. However, we did show the video that we could to Ms. King, which we legally could to Ms. King, and we have helped her petition the courts to release the other video, because by law, that is not public record. I will say that members of our police department have spent countless hours meeting with Ms. King and her representatives, including City Attorney Angie Beaker, one Friday afternoon, spent four hours with Ms. King and her representative, and showed Ms. King what legally could see, which was video in which she was involved. And Chief, you correct me if I get anything wrong to this point. They have taken their time and their effort, regardless of what some members of our community have said. They've gone above and beyond and have met with her. Again, we have petitioned the court. It is now up to the court to determine what video can be released to Ms. King. That video can still not be released to the public. The City Council may have some avenues to address that video. They would, I would encourage you to speak with the city attorney in private about that. Still may not be, there are some privacy protections, and we still may not be able to review that video. The chief has told me, and I 100% trust him, that our officers went above and beyond to control the situation, to protect Ms. King. The video shows us very much working to console her. It was a very tense situation at 2:00 in the morning with a large crowd with weapons we knew were there. Our officers, again, went above and beyond. There were several law enforcement agencies there involved in the situation. Again, a very tense situation, very chaotic after gunfire at 2:00 in the morning. It is easy for folks to Monday morning quarterback sitting in this room, but they were not there at 2:00 in the morning trying to maintain order and protect the witnesses and to protect other people in the parking lot. I will say, if anybody wanted to come forward, the police department would welcome any additional evidence, video, and would wish nothing more than to charge somebody with a crime. But I thought it was important... But I thought it was important that it's City Manager of the City of Hendersonville and to support the Hendersonville Police Department and the job they're doing, and City Attorney Beaker, who spent her time meeting with Ms. King and her representatives. So, it's important that part of that information be released to the public, even though most of those folks have left, and now the news media has left. I just thought that statement was important. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council enter closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A1 and 3, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes, and to consult with an attorney employed or retrained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and to discuss the case of Hendersonville Holdings LLC versus City of Hendersonville, Henderson County Superior Court File 23CVS600.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of entering closed session for the reasons given, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Eyes have it. All right. And we don't expect to have any business when we come out of closed session, so.